Good evening. I'd like to call to order this September 15, 2015, Planning Board meeting. First thing on their agenda is the minutes from August 18.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the minutes as modified for August 18, 2015.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those approved. Next is approval not required. Plans received between August 19 and September 15. The first one is applicant Charles D. and Catherine V. Burgess to combine three lots into one located at 74 and 76 Randolph Street, Cape Pen Islands engineer. Do we have anyone here for the applicant? Cape Pen Islands was the engineer. So the plan depicts the combination of three lots into one. And unfortunately, apparently, there's only two copies of the plan. But it wouldn't be a subdivision by definition, and my recommendation to the board is entitled to your endorsement, approval not required. Disregard the two houses on the lot. They're on the plan, but they need not be. Yes, Ralph?
Well, that was my question, is we only allow one dwelling per lot. So if there are two dwellings on... If there are going to be two dwellings on one lot, how do we get around that?
My understanding is we're not looking at the dwellings or the use. We're only looking at the land and the applicant's responsible for whatever they do. And if it changes their grandfathering or everything, that's their issue. We're really focusing on the lot. We don't approve... If you notice, Ralph, in the top... If you look at the paragraph on the top here?
Yeah.
You might want to read that. Bob, if you could read that for everyone to hear it so we understand.
Upper right?
The middle.
I can't read it now.
The Planning Board's endorsement under the subdivision control law is not a determination that the lots comply with zoning regulations and should not be construed as an approval that the lots depicted on the plan are entitled to a building permit. Approval under the supervision control law is not required.
So just remember, you're in subdivision world, and the only question in front of the board is, does the plan depict a subdivision? That's it. You make no zoning determinations whatsoever. It's just the way it works in Massachusetts. All the states do it differently, but in Massachusetts, that's the only question in front of the board. And all the plans you really have on it is the lots. They're taking three lots or making one lot, not a subdivision by definition, entitled to your endorsement. We always put that marginal note in there because you're not approving anything. You're simply stating that the plan doesn't depict a subdivision. No further point of more supervision is necessary under the subdivision control law. I know it's arcane, but there's no zoning implications here whatsoever.
So basically, we endorse a combination of lots that creates a situation for somebody else to deal with.
Correct. Roles and responsibilities.
Wow.
Only in Massachusetts.
Only in Massachusetts.
Well, how much would you pay now? But yes, unfortunately, that's the only question in front of the board. You're not making any zoning determinations. You're actually not approving anything. You're just endorsing the plan, approval not required.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Yes, Doug. And if the applicant was here, I was going to volunteer that they may want to consult with the building commissioner as to what kind of problems they're going to encounter with this. But we can only assume maybe they're going to tear these down and build a single house, not knowing and not having them here. So we can approve that it meets the requirements, but that's all we can do, I guess.
I move we endorse this plan...
Approval not required.
...of Mr. and Mrs. Burgess.
I would second that.
Any further discussion?
I have just one question. Who's the owner of the two buildings? Mr. Burgess the owner of the two buildings?
We don't know.
It's irrelevant.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next applicant. Kit Wallenhaupt, preliminary plan for proposed subdivision consisting of two lots located at 771 West Falmouth Highway. Falmouth Engineering for the applicant.
Notice.
Oh, yes, notice, Paul. Do we have any notices?
Yes, we do. On September 8, 2015, eleven of the Butters were notified by regular mail.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name's Michael Borcelli from Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant, Kit Wallenhaupt. Mr. Wallenhaupt is here tonight in the audience. If there's any specific questions for him. Mr. Wallenhaupt's family has owned the property in question for many years. There's an existing single-family dwelling on the property now, shown highlighted here. But the parcel has excess land area. The total area of the parcel in question is just over 2.7 acres, and it's in a zoning district RB, which has minimum lot requirements, including 40,000 square feet of land area, 100 feet of frontage, and 125 feet of lot width. So we were asked to look into the possibilities of developing the property to create a total of two lots. That's one additional lot. And we created this preliminary plan, which shows Lot 1 and Lot 2, and a roadway and roadway layout. It comes as close as possible to meeting all of the standards in the zoning bylaw and the subdivision regulations found at Section 300 of the Code of Falmouth. We submitted the preliminary plan and fully intended to, if we were successful in getting a preliminary approval from you, to go directly to a definitive plan. But some better ideas have come to light after we worked with your staff, particularly Mr. Curry, in looking at ways that might be a better way to develop the lot, still allowing for two building lots, but taking advantage of sections of our bylaw under planned residential development. Under planned residential development, you still would need to demonstrate that you can create by right lots, which I think the preliminary plan would demonstrate, but you can designate certain portions of the land as open space. You're not required to do as much development because the yard requirements or dimensional requirements under a planned residential development or cluster reduce the frontage requirement from what is required by right to something less than that, which is 50 feet. The frontage on the West Falmouth Highway is 110 feet. So we could create frontage on an existing road utilizing the planned residential development concept within the bylaw and eliminate the need for a complete road layout to serve just one additional lot. Instead, the frontage for that additional lot would be on West Falmouth Highway. There'd be furniture for the existing house, and then there would simply be a long driveway to serve the home site on the newly created lot. So it's a much better way to do it, and I appreciate the input from Mr. Curry on that. That being said, the road, or in this case, it would be a driveway at that point, still needs to provide adequate width and access for emergency vehicles to get to the home site that would be for the new house. So we'd have to still maintain the minimum width allowed for these smaller type subdivisions. The existing house, being right on West Falmouth Highway, already has easy accessibility for emergency vehicles. There's a hydrant right across the street. This concept would allow for the common driveway and not a road layout. It would eliminate the need for an eight-inch diameter water main with hydrant being installed up to the hammerhead turnaround. Instead, a water service that goes to the new house would be installed at a significant savings to the property owner. The hydrant on West Falmouth Highway is still within the required distance of the Falmouth Fire Department to allow them to gain access and pump from that hydrant with their apparatus and be able to fight a fire on this additional house. That would more than likely be up on this knoll, this higher land area on the lot. Other areas that are not as developable would be set aside as open space, and we would... So we would come in with a special permit for a planned residential development just to create one additional lot. This concept, I think, you're familiar with on the property abutting next door. An applicant by the name of Louis Larry, I believe, submitted a preliminary plan, and I believe they're doing a similar type of development. So there are some waivers we would require from road construction. If you're familiar with this area, West Falmouth Highway, the topography is moderately steep, I guess I'd say. This is the... On the east side of West Falmouth Highway, in the glacial moraine, so all of the roads, like the Knolls, and all of the roads that are sort of east of West Falmouth Highway have roads that meander up and go up higher elevations. This is the same type of topography. So the driveway would have to meander through the topography to minimize the steepness. We believe we could design a driveway that would have a percent grade of like 12%. You have a required maximum for a subdivision road of 10%, but I believe you have granted waivers in some instances for some slightly steeper road grades. We would be asking for other waivers that would be, I believe, reasonable to create one more lot. Things like reducing the width of the pavement from 22 feet down to something that's still workable for emergency vehicles, but not quite so wide, like 18 feet with shoulders. We would be asking for a waiver on the requirement for street lighting and instead hope that we could put a lantern at the house site that would be created in the higher elevations on the land. We'd be asking for a waiver from sidewalk, understanding that there'd be really no traffic in here other than just the traffic that uses the driveway. So things like that, we'd be asking for waivers from. Many we may not even need to ask for since it would be... We'd be asking for them if we were proposing to do a grid subdivision. But with the cluster, since it's no longer a road, we really wouldn't need the waivers. So I think it's a good concept and a good way to allow the property owner to make use of the extra land he has to create the one additional lot. And if we receive some favorable feedback, we'll be proceeding with Mr. Curry to develop an application for that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Doug.
With the fire hydrant that you referred to, how far away is that, do you know?
It's actually... I'm going to point to it. It's not on the plan, but it'll be on the next plan. It's right here on the other side of the street.
Yes, Ralph?
Yes, Mr. Borcelli. If you stay with this plan, how long is that road?
From West Falmouth Highway to this point, it's 409 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Paul? I have a question. It looks like from the beginning of road to Station 325 is a difference in elevation of 25 feet. That's pretty steep.
While I designed this, and the actual grading on this plan, this proposed contours, the grading on this plan is approximately a 12% grade in the steepest sections. It's flatter down at the bottom, and then once you get up to this point, it becomes less than 10%. So there's one section in here, and if we were to advance the cluster concept, the driveway is likely to probably shift further from this property line and allow me to flatten out the grade of the road. So I might have less area that's in the 12% range.
You're saying it's more than 10% in that first section?
It's just in this... From like Station 0 plus 75, it becomes steeper up until like Station 2 plus 50.
Mike, how different would the lots be laid out if you went to the cluster?
Well, under the cluster concept, we'd, of course, create a lot around the existing house. So it'd be pretty much probably confined to this area. And the house lot for the new lot would take advantage of the flatter topography and the higher topography up in this corner. And then the land on the south side would be set aside as open space.
So if I remember correctly, there's some open space in the back of the Larry property. Have you given any thought to the possibility of trying to keep a little closer to the road so that that could be more valuable for the open space aspect?
Yeah, I think what we would do is we would create the frontage for the new lot and the driveway for the new lot in a way that it would allow us to reserve an open space strip around this common boundary. And we'd probably... I think it's a requirement, actually, to have a strip around the perimeter that's open space. So that would become in common with the abutting open space.
Yeah, I just... I like the whole concept as it's described to us. It preserves far more of the land.
I have one question. If I heard you right, I think you're saying that presently, the proposed lot probably exceeds the gradient of our subdivision, and if you're allowed to do a cluster, it would meander and then would be conforming? Is that what I heard you say?
I said actually closer to conforming. I haven't really worked it out yet, but if this road is... Would be slightly shorter in length than a driveway that I would be able to meander a little bit more. So the longer the road, the flatter the slope. And we're at like 12% on this steep section. So if I can meander it, I might get it to 10. I mean, that would be the goal without creating excessive earthworks and regrading for one house. I'm hopeful, but I don't know that I'm going to be able to do it.
Any other comments? Do you have enough information from the audience?
Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth. Mr. Chairman, what was the comment made near the start of this about the zoning in this area? And there was some statement made about 40,000 square feet. So my question is, I know that somewhere in the area is 40,000 square feet is the lot size requirement. However, now a second type of plan is being proposed. And if this is in an area zoned for 40,000 square feet, how does that work out with that? Or did I understand about there... This being an area for 40,000 square feet? Thank you.
So Ms. Hayward, is your question, what is the zoning requirement for lot size? Is that as your question?
Yes, and I thought there had been a statement at the start about this being in a 40,000 square feet area. Now, I understand these houses that have been there for 100-plus years in some cases don't have 40,000 square feet, but...
They're divided up as 53 and 44.
The plan we're looking at shows a 53,000-square-foot lot and the other one, the 44,000-square-foot lot.
Correct.
And your question is, is the zoning 40,000 feet?
My question is, so in the original proposal, if it were two lots, that's very much covers 40,000 square feet with land left over. Now, the second proposal was for just a third lot.
No, we don't have another...
You were talking about the...
We don't have another proposal in front of us tonight. This is a preliminary plan, and they're saying they're going to bring another plan forward that's going to be under a different bylaw with a cluster. I'll let the applicant answer the question.
Thank you.
To clarify on Nancy's... I think what she might be getting to is I might have suggested that... Well, I think I did suggest and say that the minimum lot size in our residential zoning district is 40,000 square feet, and there's a minimum frontage of a 100 in lot with a 125. But the planned residential development concept allows you to reduce the size of the lots. I know they can be 10,000 square feet. They may even... I think that might be the minimum. But they're much smaller than what would be required as a by right, with the understanding that the excess land is set aside as open space. So your lot, where the house is and where the driveways and the alteration for a home site are, is concentrated on this, let's just say, 10,000 to 15,000 square foot lot. The balance of the land is held as open space and would be allowed to, you know, be woodland or undeveloped.
So to be clear, two lots, no change?
Two lots, either as a by right or as a cluster.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Nancy, does that answer your question?
For the tie-dip section.
Come back next time.
Jim?
Yes.
It's my understanding when we go to a cluster subdivision, is 65% of the land has to be open space? Is that the percentage amount?
For single-family residents, it's 50%.
Okay. So 50% of the land would then have to be set up as open space. And just quickly looking at it, it looks like five of the Butters' properties would have open space next to them rather than an actual buildable lot that somebody could build on. So under that plan, that's just what I wanted to... Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Is that enough comments?
I think so.
Anybody else in the audience?
So I was just going to say, does the applicant have the thoughts of the board? Do we need to say anything else?
Well, that's what I just asked.
Well, I mean, from the board itself, I don't know.
Well, we'll put together a motion and decision for you, your meeting for September 29. Give the guidance to the applicant.
I like the concept.
I like it too. I think anything that cuts down on paving and leaving open space for all the neighbors and the Butters is a good thing. Okay? We'll write up a motion.
Thank you.
All set? Applicant, it's Falmouth Woods. I know with the G4 LLC, preliminary plan for proposed planned residential development consisting of 33 units of multifamily housing located at 125 West Falmouth Woods Road, Holmes and McGrath. And this is a discussion... Or it's preliminary plan, excuse me. And for the applicant, Holmes and McGrath. Who's first? Mr. Arment?
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Members of the board, it's been five weeks since we were before you with a first cut at the preliminary plan for this baloney cut property now known as the Cape Club on Falmouth Woods Road. Plans have been revised by Holmes and McGrath. Mike McGrath is here. Kelly Cardoza is here. She's a consultant with Avalon Consulting. Ron Despain, who's the golf course designer, is also here. The plans that we're going to discuss tonight are freshly produced. We discussed them with the town planner only briefly yesterday and gave him copies of plans that you have. That's not enough. That's not enough time for you to have carefully reviewed them for the town planner to have all of his remarks perhaps for the town engineers. But I assure you that over these past five weeks, the applicant has been working hard to try to address concerns that were raised at the last meeting and by the town planner when we met with him on August 17, shortly after the last meeting. And that, in our opinion, the plans are getting very good. And they're significantly improved from what you've seen before. And that's what I want to discuss with you tonight. I hope that at a future meeting, hopefully within just a couple of weeks, the board will be able to grant its approval of the preliminary plan that we've submitted. And then we will set out on a whole lot more permitting. We need to go to the Cape Cod Commission, not just because we are dividing a parcel of more than 30 acres of land, but because the plan shows in what we've called in previous plans, the commercial portion of the property, 80 commercial accommodations units, eight units in each of 10 cottages. So that requires Cape Cod Commission review. The Cape Cod Commission is going to review traffic and wastewater and water quality and water pressure, lot coverage, open space issues, affordable housing and the like. And only after the Cape Cod Commission issues a decision will we be back to the town for the local permits. The entire 130 acres involved here is subject to an existing special permit for a golf course because our zoning bylaw requires a special permit for a golf course. And the zoning board of appeals will be asked to modify that. And the zoning board of appeals will also be asked to grant a special permit that's required for commercial accommodations, which are allowed in the agricultural zone by special permit. The planning board will need to approve the definitive plan that will evolve from this preliminary plan with whatever changes the Cape Cod Commission imposes. And you will also not only be approving a subdivision plan, but granting a special permit because planned residential development requires a planning board's special permit. And we will be back before the planning board for site plan review with respect to the zoning board of appeals special permits. So you can see that we have a fairly long road ahead of us, but with the right plans and the support of the town and, most importantly, of the residential neighbors, which we think we have, and we think a lot of the neighbors who are here tonight are in favor of these proposals. We think hopefully this process can be reasonably efficient and expedited. The work over the past five weeks has included the revisions to the plans and then meetings with the association of, in the neighborhood. Well, what are those changes? We have changed the proposed housing within the planned residential development from multifamily housing to single-family residences. And we have reduced the number of dwelling units from 33 units to 25 units, 25 units of single-family housing. The result of that allows us to change the housing plan, that is, this area, which is shown in substantial detail on this plan, so as to move the structures farther away from the golf course. We've shown a one-way traffic flow allowing us to reduce the width of the road to again be able to move these houses away from the golf course. And as I said, we've reduced the number of units by 25%, 33 to 25. The first hole itself has been reoriented so that even as we moved the housing away from the first hole, we, with Ron Despain's guidance, moved the orientation of the first hole to the northwest so that it's aimed away from the housing. And we eliminated all of the proposed commercial accommodation cottages, which on the previous plan you saw lined the first hole to the west side over here. All been removed so that more trees can be planted from this side. The hole, as I said, is oriented differently. And I think we've addressed the concerns that the board may have had and the planning staff certainly had about the orientation of that hole to the proposed housing. By the way, commercial accommodations are not part of the application for, for the preliminary subdivision plan. But just to tell you, they've been reoriented so they now circle this entry and we're creating a village of attractive cottage-type structures that would be in this area in front of the existing block. So those are changes to the plan that affect this portion.
I'm just, I want to just make it clear. We're not talking about any of the commercial accommodations. It's not part of this presentation tonight. And I think to bring it up in public means we're going to have dialogue on it. That's not on the agenda. Is that correct? We're only here...
Well, I'm not looking for dialogue about it, but I think it's important for you to understand it just briefly, the overall...
I appreciate that. I have one other question. On the plan that I have, I can't see an end of the open space. It goes off the end of the map. I really can't really tell. Or is this line, where does the end of the open space plan on the, on the ground?
Well, you have, you have not only that plan that shows the housing, but you have a plan that shows...
I understand, but we're, last time the comment was we need continuous open space all grouped in one piece. Can I see that plan?
Yes, you can. Essentially, it's this, but I'll explain it to you in a second. Or it's this, which is a little, coloring is a little bit different to show different details. Let me get to a detailed discussion of the open space in just a minute, Mr. Fox. Because I want to tell you what some of these changes are on this plan in addition to the open space. Because of the change from commercial, sorry, from multifamily housing to single-family residential housing, the percentage of the property that's required to meet the open space requirement goes down. It just came up with Mr. Maderos's question, or I think it was Mr. Maderos, in the previous hearing. The open space requirement for multifamily housing is 65%, 67%, two-thirds. And the percentage requirement for a single-family residence is 50%. So we have less of an open space requirement. In addition, obviously, a subdivision of 25 houses instead of 33 units requires a smaller tract of land. And the required open space also is reduced accordingly. So the open space requirement drops from about 26 acres to about 15, sorry, I should know this. Actually, it's on the plan. So about 24 acres is total open space. Now, the entire golf course has been placed on a single lot. The previous plan had the first hole and the 10th hole and a couple of greens, 9th and 18th. That were actually outside of the PRD, the Planned Residential Development parcel. That's, that will be changed. And Mr. McGrath's plan tonight shows that. So actually, the PRD parcel is going up from 99 acres to about 109 acres. They said the total tract is 130 acres, just, just driving that. The entire golf course, the entire PRD parcel, under 9 acres, except for the seven and a half acres that is the house, that entire property is open space. It is, of course, all contiguous open space. This is all open space, but it has a golf course included in the open space. The zoning bylaw specifically allows that, but says that the golf course, and it doesn't refer to golf course, it talks about recreational use, chapter 61B, which includes golf course, can only be a third of the required open space. The required open space, as Mr. McGrath said, is about 24 acres. So only about eight acres of the, of the golf course counts towards the required open space. But we have 102 acres of open space that will be subject to a permanent conservation restriction, requiring that in perpetuity, it will remain open and not built upon. If we need 24 acres of open space and only eight acres can be the golf course, where are the 16 acres, it's actually 15.31 acres, that can't be golf course and which we want to show is wooded area left in its natural condition? This plan shows in these six green areas, portions of the planned residential development tract that are completely out of play and not required for the golf course, for the recreational area, won't be used in. Now, we've been able, because of the significant reduction in the required open space, to eliminate a lot of areas shown on the plan you saw five weeks ago that you may have had questions about. There are no parcels proposed in this dark green that are less than an acre. And the zoning bylaw provisions for PRD specifically allow lots to be less, lots of open space to be less than, than an acre. But these are all over an acre. One is 1.1 acre, the next smallest is 1.9, and the others are all over two acres in size. These are not insignificant areas, a naturally forested area. Furthermore, since we were able to select from the open space areas wooded that were shown on the previous plan, the portions that were best out of play, the wider portions, so on, these are areas that are, in all cases, 70 feet wide with the first 10 feet not being counted towards this wooded area. In other words, even though we think these are set up so that the golf play doesn't involve them, we've taken into account that a ball could go into the woods. But 10 feet into the dense woods, which would not be managed, which would not be cut, in which there could be no maintenance, only into the woods that we start and go at least 50 feet, usually in most cases much more, to the other side of the open space, then there would be another 10-foot wooded area before you get to a area of rough of the golf course. So this has been designed with Mr. Despain's help that these larger parcels in here are the required open space that can't be part of the golf course. We've also shown a trail traversing the property that is actually shown in this plan as beginning at the, at Falmouth Woods Road, across Falmouth Woods Road from a trail that exists on the golf club of Cape Cod property to the southeast. And it starts at Falmouth Woods Road, it runs along the property outside the golf course and into open space. And then through the open space, then it's through the wooded area, through the middle of the open area. So it's not within the golf course. And comes out over here in a location that is next to a tee box in the yard green, pretty much out of play. And then back into the middle of area of woods. And then out again in an area that isn't an area of play and connecting to the marine trail along Route 28. Creating public access, certainly contributing to some of the goals of the PRD development, which even when there are trail connections to public open space or trails, even could allow a bonus fence on the way. We're not asking for, and we're not saying there's any problem with that. We're saying that that is a worthwhile, a goal and a function of planned residential development. We previously presented to you a plan that showed the division of, of the PRD property when it was only 99 acres. Now it's 109 acres into 41 house lots. That's the grid plan that shows what could have been done even on that smaller piece. We're only proposing 25 single-family residences. We're not proposing that there's a four-lot density that could be argued, could be applied for PRD. The question came up at your last meeting. The town planner raised it in our meeting about a golf course being part of the planned residential development open space. Another issue that came up was the public access to the open space. I'd like to address those issues. The bylaw, section 24121, that is a portion of the PRD bylaw, specifically allows existing recreational uses to be included within the PRD parcel. Under section 24122D, the purposes of, of a planned residential development include that existing recreational activities integrate with the regional and local tourist and recreational economy, which cannot otherwise be self-supporting, will be preserved and protected from redevelopment, from redevelopment. As I mentioned at the start of my presentation five weeks ago, in recent days, this golf club has not been successful. The new owner has come in, is putting a load of money into it to make it a first-class facility. His dedication to this project, his working with the neighbors to assure the continuation of the golf club and the preservation of this tract of land without being developed except as, as we're showing to you, is fully consistent with the purpose of PRD to protect existing development, that is, existing recreation. Under section 24125A2, a PRD may contain a recreational use which conforms to chapter 61B of the general laws. A golf course is one of the specifically mentioned recreational uses in chapter 61B. And the town of Falmouth has granted to this golf course a tax exemption based on that chapter 61B designation. And I point out that chapter 61B includes hunting, skiing, private non-commercial air courts, archery, target shooting, commercial horseback riding, equine boarding, and on and on. These are uses which are recognized as, as qualifying as, as open space. We're talking about a golf course, which... We're talking about a golf course, which won't be developed and which wildlife use and contributes to the environment. Section 24131b expressly allows the planning board to accept open space, to accept open space that includes a recreational use, and to accept it, to not require it to be owned by the town or by an organization of unit owners or by a nonprofit trust. Rather, the bylaw specifically says that such open space that includes a recreational use can be owned by a for-profit entity and need not be conveyed to a residence association, a corporation, or a trust or to the town. And section 24131b allows open space to include chapter 61b recreational use, but then says that that portion of the lot in that use can only be one-third of the open spaces, as I've already explained. And section 24131c talks again about the recreational use. It says it prohibits access to the recreational use area over the residential lots in the planned residential development. And the point of my going through this is that the planned residential development bylaw repeatedly refers to this type of activity and to chapter 61b, which includes a golf course. The PRD development, redevelopment of this property, will preserve 102 acres in an open state. A golf course is land that's preserved in an open state or naturally vegetated area as a portion of the property is. The planned residential development bylaw says nothing about the open space having to be available for use of the residents of the of the neighborhood. You just, you won't find it anywhere. The purpose is to set aside land that won't be developed, and recreational area can be included in that. This will be a golf course open to the public for a fee most of the time, I'm sure. But we are providing public access. So while I disagree with some of the thinking that I think some board members had that open space needs to be owned by and next to the residences, which isn't correct, but we are going to provide that access trail. It could be used for cross-country skiing in the winter, conditions permitting, and it will be open to the general public for those purposes and connect to the marine I think that the changes we've made to the plan make it a good plan. There were, have been reference to meeting a standard of excellence of overall design and amenities. Well, we're not required to meet that standard. That happens to be only one of, I think, seven criteria, that, four of which I believe are needed to be met under section 24122. So to use that particular one and say you have to meet that, I don't think is right. I think what you should be doing is comparing the benefits of this kind of development to a development of 41 or perhaps more house lots that don't preserve the golf course and that don't provide the open space we're talking about. But I think that we actually are now, and I'm not sure I would have said that at the last hearing, but with the changes that have been made to this plan, I think it is excellent in its overall design. I think the neighborhood agrees with that, and I hope some members of the neighborhood will say that. And I hope that the planning board will see fit to approve this plan. Now, as I said at the beginning of my presentation, I know you haven't had time to digest this plan, and I wish that weren't the case because we'd like to get on with all this other permitting as soon as possible. But probably you have some questions based on my presentation or the look at the plans that you have had, and any of us on behalf of the developer will be happy to try to address them. Thanks.
I have a question. This plan, I heard 24 acres is what's required for open space for this development. I see where there's 16 acres of the open space declared. Where's the other eight acres coming from?
The golf course.
Where in the golf course?
Well, we're providing 86 acres.
No, that's not answering my question. Where specifically? If you can say you're going to divide open space here, 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 and here, and that's going to count for open space, I want to know on this plan where those eight acres are.
We'll be happy to do that. That's easy to do. There are any number of eight-acre chunks we could show. But I don't, I please don't, don't miss the fact that we are going to put a conservation restriction, a permanent conservation restriction on the entire 102 acres of the golf course.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not our determination at this point. We're trying to figure out the specifics of your plan. You've made that clear.
We have a minimum amount of open space we have to provide, and that can include eight acres of the golf course. We're going to beat that by about 1,000 percent. Paul?
I just have a couple comments. I thought the layout of the roadway through the development is much better than two public sectors. I think that's a big improvement.
I think you suggested that at the last meeting.
I think that was. Secondly, I think the the trail is kind of interesting, too, meanders through there. That's new.
It is new. It's a response to suggestions that we came out of discussions with the town planner, and we think it helps.
I also noticed that you did reduce to 33, I think.
33 to 25.
Last time you talked about affordable housing. Were those the ones that were eliminated in the smooth plan?
No, not at all. The affordable housing is an obligation of any housing project that goes before the Cape Cod Commission. The Cape Cod Commission's standard requirement is 10% of the number of units developed. So under the previous plan, there would need to be four affordable housing units. Under this plan, there would need to be three affordable housing units. And that that standard, that requirement can be met either onsite or offsite or through financial contributions as approved by the Cape Cod Commission. I was, I wouldn't say startled, but surprised, perhaps a bit amused by the headline in the enterprise about the hearing five weeks ago. The enterprise reporter called me and asked me to explain the affordable housing requirement, and I said to her just what I said to you right now. But the headline in the enterprise was something like Ballymead development to include affordable housing, or affordable housing planned at Ballymead, or something like that. I didn't think that was really the gist, not, I thought a headline might say, planned residential development will will preserve golf course in perpetuity. It seemed a bit more important to me.
Well, I still have the same question I asked in the beginning, when you show the open space going off into a plan that drifts into a huge 100-acre parcel. I don't think it's clear. I would like to see it much more defined on the open space. I mean, I'm talking about this plan that we have in front of us here, which is the only one I have, new one, and the open space is, goes off the, off the end of the plan. And I heard everything you said, but...
Let me just try once more, Mr. Park. This plan shows the planned residential development parcel.
Yes.
It's everything inside this black line. And this is a little strange because this property is actually part of the open space for the condominium development over here. But this entire piece of property within this black line is the 102 acres, excepting these seven acres. That will be the open space. Now, if Mr. Magaro's would like us to identify eight of those acres, to demonstrate that those acres together with the 16, meet the 26 acres, we can do that. But the entire golf course is open space. And so when you say the plan ends and doesn't show it, it's because the plan you're looking at only shows the housing area. It's a small portion of this plan. But everything on this plan that is in white or the dark green, in other words, this yellowish area isn't included, and, well, this area with the housing, it's all open space.
But the owners of these lots don't have access to that space.
Well, they actually do through the path we have, and we've perhaps come up with other ways to do it.
Does it connect to all of them, and it's intermittent? I'm used to seeing open space. I thought, well, I'll have to, my knowledge of the requirements doesn't compare to yours, so I'm going to have to do some work on that. But I thought it had to be contiguous.
It is contiguous. There are 102 acres of contiguous open space here. 102 acres.
On a Saturday afternoon in the middle of July, how are they going to walk across that?
There is no requirement that the open space be available for the use of the home owners. That is not the purpose.
And that's probably where my confusion comes from. I thought that was...
I have tried tonight through expressly referencing the sections of the zoning bylaw to make, make those things clear.
I heard, I heard you, there were so many, I couldn't keep track of them.
That's right.
And I need to probably really...
But the, but the one thing you should look for, and you don't have to be able to determine how many, you know, if there are too many of something, just look for a single...
I will.
...reference to open space being used by or next to the residents. You won't find a single one. That is not the primary purpose of the open space.
I must be mistaken.
The applicant has made their representation.
I just have one other question.
Make sure we clarify anything for everybody at a later date.
You said the property is 102 acres of continuous. How much of that 102 acres is golf course? That's what I just like to know.
Well, we've identified 102, well, let me put it this way. We've identified 16 acres that are completely out of play, almost as a practical matter because of where they are and, and from a golf regulation point of view, they will be out of play and can be designated no entry. So we've identified 16 acres that are not golf course, and all the rest of the property can be considered golf course, although some of it may in fact not really be in play.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to invite you on behalf of the owner, although we could do this at a definitive plan stage, but your preliminary plan decision is extremely important. We can have a site visit, schedule things, so you can see what we're talking about, to look at the woods in the areas we are designating as basically no entry for golf course purposes. We are going to put trails for walking-through purposes, and see how they are separated from the play area, and also appreciate the changes we've made, for instance, to the first hole and that, the location of housing is safe and appropriate. So if a site visit would be helpful to the board, we would very much like to accommodate that.
I think a site visit would be a great idea, and I thought the last plan was marginal, and this is a big improvement. I didn't even really understand the concept when I saw the first presentation, but I'm starting to think that this is a lot better than what I first saw. Still grappling a little bit with the, the open space while it's being, you know, trampled by carts and golfers, but, I mean, they're only there in the daytime, and the wildlife, many of, much of it comes out at night. When I'm golfing, I do see, there's always some kind of wildlife cutting across my path.
If I can just interject and perhaps say again, this is an alternative. That is, it's an alternative to a minimum of 41 private house lots with no open space It is an alternative, and we capture the development potential of the 109 acres. We accept only 25 houses instead of 41, and small lots, you know, they're not going to be as valuable as the 41, but the development costs are a lot less. It's a lot less pavement. We're able to have a, some kind of a sewage treatment facility instead of individual septic permits. There are a lot of benefits to this kind of development. So we're going to capture that, and we get to keep the rest of the golf course, keep the golf course as open space. Is it all wooded with no human interaction except paths or hunters or something? No, it is not. But it has lots of benefits to the environment and aesthetic environment benefits, especially to people who like to look at golf courses. But that's what this is a choice of. It isn't, I think you have to see it that way, and this is, and the benefits of this plan. We've shown you a grid plan which would be, we think, have to be approved if it meets the subdivision rules and regulations of 41 one-miles. This is a lot better.
I was ready to move on about 15 minutes ago. I'd like to hear what the public has to say.
My name is Tim Ridden, 382 Karen Ridge Road, Ballymead Development. I was here at the last meeting five weeks ago, and provided support for the plan, not only for myself as a resident, but as the president of the Ballymead Property Owners Association. And with the support of the association and approval by the board, the board and the association fully endorse, as a board, what's being proposed. We have been kept abreast of the recent modifications. We saw them, I think, last Friday afternoon. And subsequent to that, we provided a overview to our members and asked for them to write letters of support. We told them by email, by the communication, that we still, we showed the revisions. We made, we made them aware of the fact that we still intended to, as an association, come and support the modifications. We asked them to write letters, and I have, I think, 55. 54 of them are for, and there's one opposed. So we, our interaction with the developer has been great, and we fully hope that the modifications that have been made will assist you in coming to a solution to be able to support the development also.
Thank you.
Send him to the planning office. You can give him the brand, take him.
Thank you.
You're next, right here in front of the light, you can go and share.
My name is Barry Glasgow. I live at 331 Falmouth Woods Road, part of Ballymead. I think in support of this plan, the developer has been very willing to share his plans with the inhabitants of Ballymead at every step of the process. And I think what he proposes here makes very, makes good... Makes good use of the land. Makes good use of the land for availability of housing that'll bring people to Falmouth. It does provide... It should provide some low-income housing or sort of a low-income housing. But it also provides an area where wildlife can exist and undisturbed. And I think it will be good for the town of Falmouth. I think it will bring people into the town of Falmouth that wanna play golf. I think the clubhouse will bring people into Falmouth for events. And I think that will all be beneficial to the town. And I would hope that the planning board can support the plan. Thank you.
In the blue shirt, you have your hand up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Joe Novaleen. I live on Karen Ridge Road in Ballymead. And I'm currently the vice president of the Ballymead Property Owners Association. As Tim Ridden mentioned, we have an overwhelming support for this project from our residents at this point in time. And the developer has done extensive work with us to provide information, to solicit our comments. So there's been a good exchange of information. But I wanna stress another point, and Barry just mentioned it here. This is gonna be a first-class, true five-star golf resort. I think it's really exciting that the town of Falmouth will have an opportunity to be the location for this type of a resort. I think it's gonna be a benefit for an image to the community and also economically providing new jobs. And I think these things are gonna be a very significant part of the impact. Really encourage you to approve the project. Thank you.
Next. Hold them there in white, please.
My name is Peg Nicholson. I've been a resident of Ballymead for seventeen years. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to support a project as opposed to opposing a project. The developer, as everyone has said, has been very forthcoming since before he even owned the property, last November, has worked with us. He has a lot of good ideas. We've shared good ideas with him. The plans have evolved dramatically since last November, and I encourage your support for this project.
My name is Alan Peretti. I live on... I live in one of the condos that we're talking about, the land that's directly adjacent to the golf course. I've lived there about sixteen years with my wife. I'm also the president of the Condominium Association. Since we got these last plans from the developer Friday, we submitted them to our thirty residents, to our thirty units. And in just a short time, nineteen people came back and have been to pass these in with enthusiastic support of what's happening. You know, Mr. Armett was talking about the wildlife. I live right on the tenth fairway. And for quite a few of the units, right on that tenth fairway. And for years now, we've seen every kind of animal, from coyotes to deers to rabbits to foxes. They populate that area all the time. There's been golfers there the entire time. That ever go into the option with forty-one sub-private homes, that would all be lost. So we think by keeping the golf course, proving the golf course is gonna do nothing but, you know, keep that wildlife happy and it's safe where they are. We just want to, again, want to enthusiastically give our support to the development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Board members, we all set? Brian, do you have enough information to work on this?
I think I have all the notes I need. And we'll see you on the twenty-nine.
Okay, thank you very much. If you're all leaving, please leave quietly. We have a continuing meeting. Next on our agenda is a discussion. Please leave quietly. We have more work to do. Next on our agenda is a discussion of the multifamily zoning. And these are housing issues for some of the important issues of the town and the accessory apartment bylaw. So I guess the purpose tonight is to get... The local comprehensive plan has identified as these as potential goals for our town. And now we're looking for board members to comment on their vision of how they think this will work going forward. Is that correct, Brian?
Right. I mean, the town meeting now has voted your... On your recommendation, the goals and public policies. And one of the things you'll see there under your action items is the... On the fourth bullet is to look at, and for the next six months, and it's been six months since town meeting, new districts for multifamily housing and cottage courts. And so it's important to me to hear what this elected board has to say as in its vision of what a multifamily district is gonna quack like, it's gonna look like. What do you expect it to do? I didn't bring in model. I didn't bring examples. I think it's important that you, as the elected board, discuss amongst yourselves for me to hear what it is you want this district to accomplish, what it's gonna look like, what it's gonna quack like. There are no bars. There's just what you believe we need to move forward to achieve that goal and those policies just voted by the town meeting. For example, you may have envisioned a multifamily district to be X number of units. It might be accentuating the heights or intensities, or whatever it might be. Just to kick this off, I'd like to hear that discussion. And then that would be able... I'll be able to create something based on your vision.
Ken, I usually look to the outside first and then move my way in. If you wanna pass, I'll go to Ralph. I'll not put your end of the gun. Would you like to go to Ralph first?
Yeah, I had a thought. I was gonna break down my...
Go on.
No pass for no.
Okay, Paul?
I have a question on policy two. It says, create multiple housing opportunities. I'm not sure what the word multiple means in that case. Create housing opportunities seems to be a basis of this, but what is the purpose of multiple?
Well, tonight's discussion is on two issues, multifamily zone and accessory apartments. Those are the goals and policies that's already been approved. We've discussed those already. We can go back and revisit them if you want, but I guess we're looking for your vision.
I could answer that. When we're talking about multiple housing opportunities, it's things like accessory apartments, the conversion bylaw, different types of cluster development, cottage-style development. I mean, whether we change some of the zoning for some of the residential areas to accommodate these things, that's what we meant by multiple, not just multiple families.
Thank you.
Doug?
So I did some thinking about not the multifamily. I'm not as prepared to talk about that as I am about the accessory apartment bylaw modification. I looked in the residential apartment modification, and I see that the fifteen thousand square foot lot doesn't apply to a lot of lots in the East Falmouth area, which I'm familiar with, especially given the fact that now we're putting in sewerings in the Maravista area. I think we need to remove the fifteen thousand square foot minimum as the first thing we should consider. And then in agricultural district, it could be the same thing. I think we also might wanna consider waiving the coastal pond overlay district and water resource protection area aspect of it. I'm always in favor of the nitrogen removal and sewer plan and all this other things. But if we wanna think that we're... I don't know if we're in crisis mode, but we're heading toward it as far as affordable and medium-range housing, we might wanna consider relaxing those requirements. Because when you look at the requirements when you're in those areas, which is most of the areas in any comment that I'm familiar with, all the area from Shorewood Drive out to Seacoast Shores, you have both undersized lots and you're in the coastal pond overlay district. And in many other areas where we need this, you're in the coast... You're in the water resource protection district. I question whether or not adding one apartment to a home to create an affordable living space for a person is really gonna create a danger. We need to move forward with sewer planning or some sort of nitrogen reduction planning. So I'm in favor of considering changing, relaxing the rules on that if we have an ongoing plan to deal with, you know, mitigating this nitrogen issue. Then in the general residence, I don't know if I'm right, but I don't see any option for affordable accessory apartments, only multifamily or three- or four-unit housing. So I don't know if it would be something we would consider there also, maybe including accessory apartment options. And possibly even in the public use and business district. I don't know why we couldn't just say... It could be an option to have an affordable apartment anywhere that there could be a house. Because there is housing in all these areas. And I wouldn't mind seeing, you know, not every house, but many houses, having these accessory apartments. Because the accessory apartments alone could really do a lot to help us toward our affordable housing needs. So I think it's a huge thing that we could make some minor changes to our bylaws and allow these things to really be able to be proliferating. That would be a big help. In the light industrial zone, I think we might wanna take out the multifamily housing because we've been losing a lot of industrial land to that. Unless we get a plan in place to have transferred development rights whenever that industrial land is taken up for housing, maybe we can assign it somewhere else. I don't know where that would be, because we're running out of land. So those are my initial thoughts. And as far as where the multifamily zoning could be, my first thought is any business area would be the first choice or contiguous with business area. And maybe it could be outlying areas near business zone land could be rezoned so that the housing could be adjacent to or behind the business zones rather than having it out in, you know, rural areas. But I haven't thought that through. I mistakenly assumed we'd get a little more guidance, but I can see Mr. Curry's desire to have us come up with something on our own rather than being led. So I think that's actually good. And so I'm willing to do some more thinking on that.
With your...
Yeah.
Yes, Bob?
I started with the conversion bylaw and going through that. And there are so many pieces to that. There are some smaller things that could change right within that. Just looking quickly, section I, the principle, number one, the principle our accessory unit must be owned or occupied for a period is, you know, things like that. There are a lot of little things like that that I think make it so that people don't wanna do anything where I think if someone had the setbacks or the lot size changed so on a small lot, you could add a second story or maybe a wing off to one side that's a studio or a one-bedroom or something like that. And when it comes to the nitrogen loading and septic and all that, we usually go by number of bedrooms. So if you've got a two-bedroom little house and you're adding one or two more bedrooms, it's not really that big of a deal. So I kinda agree with Doug on that issue.
And one other thing that you bring to my attention when you mention that is there's a requirement that they not be summer rentals.
Yeah.
And I don't agree with that either. Even though that wouldn't apply to affordable rentals, it would still be a benefit to the homeowner. Say, for instance, in the Maravista area, now they're gonna have to pay for sewerings. Why shouldn't they be able to have a little apartment that they could rent to somebody in the summer? Maybe it's somebody who's older. And to have a three-month rental, it could help them, you know, offset their expensive...
Well, I see this as an opportunity for a lot of people to age in place.
Right.
If they have a place that they could rent out that either they could move into... I have friends out there that converted garages. They move into the garage for the summer and rent out the house. But I think it would be a great benefit to the aging population in this town to have an additional unit that they could either rent out to supplement their pension or their income and help them to stay living where they wanna live.
Ken?
The one thing I don't agree with what was said was make them summer rentals. If you're gonna make affordable housing, you can't do summer rentals. Because what they will do is people won't ever rent them to an affordable person. They'll rent them out for twenty-five hundred or three thousand dollars a week in the summer, and will defeat our purpose of creating multifamily, you know, homes for people. I mean, that's what the whole thing is, is to get housing so people can live and stay in the town. The one thing that I did wanna mention about the agricultural zones is we may wanna look at that again in one aspect of... Remember when, next to the high school, they built the... What is it? The Jack-in-the-Box built that property. We have to look before we create a multifamily area that's allowed because somebody could technically get a couple lots, build a couple multifamily homes, and then open some type of business just like the Jack-in-the-Box did. Because...
Jack-in-the-bean-stuff.
Jack-in-the-bean-stuff, whatever it is, yeah.
Jack-in-the-Box.
Yeah, that's the cheeseburger, right? Yeah, it's cheeseburger, okay. But that's something we need to look at because, like Brian had mentioned before, they tried to get some of these areas rezoned residential, but there's still so many that are double A. People can still put businesses out there. So we've gotta be careful that it may make it feasible for some investor to put a couple multifamily homes or something there and then open a little business on the side because they grow flowers or something. So we gotta look at that before we... Before we create that in a zone. That's something I wanted to mention.
Patrice, though?
Yeah, I've got a few comments. I would encourage the board members to look at Judy Barrett's study, RKG Associates, because there are a number of ideas in there that she has put forth. But one of the critical things that I think we've discussed as the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and I think Judy Barrett recognizes too, is you're going to have to increase density. And the only logical way to increase density is it's gonna have to be on a sewer line. Otherwise, we're creating more septic systems all over town that create problems. We don't wanna do that. The other thing is too, if we're looking at affordability, and I think we must look at affordability, I agree with Ken, no, they cannot be summer rentals when we're allowing things. Because if you read the Cape Cod Times lately, this is exactly what happens. Out you go for three months during the summer. What do you do? Camp in the woods or what? It's a very tempting thing to get those kinds of rents per week. So I think when we're allowing greater density, the stipulation has to be that they cannot be summer rentals. They have to be for year-round. We had talked as a committee, and I think we brought this up before, but maybe not, that a logical area to increase density is between here and, say, Jones Road. And we can do it... We'd have to find some good ways of doing that. But that's where you can really add accessory apartments. Or people may wanna combine two lots and get some multifamily housing in there. We have to look at the zoning for that, those areas. There will be opposition no matter what we do to increase density. But the logical thing is you can really only put it where you've got water mains and where you've got sewer lines when you're talking about a lot of increased density. And that's the fastest way we're gonna be able to do it. The cottage communities that our Cottage Court Center mentioned here, that's one of the things that we talked about too. We don't have the open land that might allow that to happen. But this is a number of smaller residences that are perhaps around a court or a clubhouse or whatever you wanna say. So those residences don't have to have the necessity for... That we feel in today's world for larger kitchens, guest bedrooms, all that kind of thing. Because you've got the clubhouse with those facilities that people can use. This would encourage younger families with children because there would be a playground with this. It would encourage, we hope, elderly people so you'd have a more unified, family-friendly, community-centered sort of thing. community-centered sort of thing. I don't know where we'd have the area to do that kind of thing. But that's cottage community concept, and we had talked briefly about doing that. The only way I see that we can do something fairly quickly to provide housing is to take a look at the zoning and allow for the accessory apartments, allow for greater density in our zoning.
Ralph?
I think the, there's a reason why the owner has to be on the property for the accessory apartments, is the fact that if both units are rented, then the situation can go downhill. And if you were a neighbor of one of those properties, you, you would then be the complainer, and it would, if it was a complaint-driven situation. Whereas if there was an owner, um, living on the property, I think there would be fewer issues. I think there was a reason for, that was basically the reason. I've talked to other people in this, people in our town, that have real issues with properties that are not, that are not supervised properly. And I think that, that that's probably one of the reasons why that's in there. I would, I would hesitate to take that out of the bylaw.
My only concern, and I think every point's well-taken, and I'm not, we need to have discussion and bring forward, but we've had an accessory apartment, bylaw hasn't worked for a long time, and some of, it was too restrictive, so we have to find a balance between some of the restrictions. And I'm not gonna say, comment whether we should do one or the other, but maybe if we took away some of the affordability restrictions on it, but still had to be, where it couldn't be a summer rental, it had to be year-round, there's gotta be a compromise. And I'm not saying that's it, but we need to be looking for a compromise to move this forward, 'cause we, this has been on the books for a long time, and it's not happening. So if, if we go back and do the same thing we always did, I don't think it's gonna do anything. So I think we all should be looking for compromise, and hopefully having compromises coming forward from the public and other groups that we can discuss and, and work forward. But I think to have an open mind and work on it is good. And we had some great ideas. Doug, yes?
I think it's true that if you open the door to the summer rentals, it will definitely detract from the number of affordable housing units you'll get. But I sort of believe in the freedom of being able to have your own property and to make your own choices. So I think that there are some people who will choose the affordable housing or the year-round apartment choice, but I personally feel like it's your property, you should have a right to do more with your property.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna decide it tonight.
No, I'm just saying, depending...
That's gonna be a real discussion point.
I agree that that's a good point that you made, both of you, but still feel like it's something you might want to consider.
Ken, some more? You had your hand up for a second?
Well, I was just gonna say, the accessory apartment, I, I'm not like wanting somebody to say affordable, I'm just meaning it just needs to be a year-round rental. That, that was my point on that. A rental so somebody could stay there year-round. That's what we need, more year-round rentals in the town.
And the market will dictate what rents are, so that, that could be a self-leveling thing. I just wanted to mention, Pat mentioned density. I, I just don't want people to think that we want to build it and they will come type of thing. We're looking to keep people here. Falmouth has actually been losing population. It was in the last census that population actually declined. And the decline is mostly young people who are leaving town, because they can't find someplace affordable to live, because they gotta rent a house out in two acres or an acre someplace. And there aren't any small little apartments that they can, they can rent. So we want to keep those people here, and the, this, the younger people today, you know, you got five-step kids, and they all bike, they all walk, they, some of them didn't even have cars until a couple of years ago, because they've lived in urban settings and places where they could bike and walk to work and things like that. And that's what we want to create. We want to create areas that are gonna attract people that do want to walk to work, they do want to walk to their entertainment, they do want to bike to wherever. So that's what we're talking about, increasing the density. And by allowing smaller apartments to be added to existing buildings, I think is one way to do it.
And the word I'd add to that was transportation linkages.
Yeah.
Because that's the only thing that wasn't mentioned already, we had discussed.
Can I make one more point? So in an area like Maravista, where you have small cottages, where now that they're gonna be able to get rid of their septic, they're gonna have more room to increase their footprint, where they didn't have the reserved room for septic, they could have this little apartment. And thinking in another way, say the house itself now becomes more affordable because they have this accessory apartment. So now you've got a young family, maybe they're not at the bottom of the income scale, maybe they're in the middle, but they're still struggling to get their first house, that accessory apartment with that little summer rental that's very, you know, it's not intrusive on their life. So it makes their life more affordable in that small house.
If you look at a generation, like my parents' generation, a lot of them started out with a two-family house. And they bought a two-family house so they could get a bank loan for one thing, then they had their rental income from one of the other units. And then they ended up selling it, maybe building their own, or they just stayed there forever. But that was a, a building block for almost a whole generation, the post-World War II generation.
Creative communities too.
Right.
Yeah.
It just makes better financial sense for our citizens.
And I can see that happening out at Seacoast Shores, you add a second story, you can do a second story in a weekend, you know, blow the roof off.
Oh, yeah.
Stick it up there.
Just like on TV, yeah.
Pat, you have something?
One of the things that we might have to look at, because we're talking about increasing density, we may have to look at lot coverage. Because when you're talking about adding an accessory apartment, we may not be able to do it and only have twenty and twenty-five at the outside of lot coverage and make it anything little bit. When you're talking about smaller lots too.
That's true.
Because if now the house is on a sewer, and you want to add an accessory apartment, it doesn't matter whether you don't have to have a septic system anymore, you don't have the lot size to be able to add that.
Well, there's your density.
Those are all great ideas. Brian, does that give you enough to work with?
Well, certainly the focus is on accessory apartments, so I guess we'll start there. And what I'm hearing is that you sort of want to incrementally test some of the criteria in that bylaw that are fairly restrictive, the lot sizes, if you're in the coastal pond or water resource district. I think you had a very good point about summer rentals, you know, that's a two-edged sword. But I think if we link it to the function of size, and a function of the number of bedrooms in your house, probably worked better that way, so I'll just make some notes to myself. Or occupied, I think Ralph gets to that point, it's all about supervision, whether it's owner-occupied, or there's something attached to the supervision of the units that makes it, because when you have an absentee landlord, you have those problems.
That's true.
So supervision is the key word, I think Ralph introduced into our discussion, I think I'll work on that. Remember, even though we have the sewer, we have a flow-neutral bylaw, so where we add, we must subtract. I think we can do that.
We can do that, yeah.
We can, we'll be able to do that. That's just the way that it works with DEP, because it is a sub-function of bedrooms. What's the difference if I have a two-bedroom house, or a three-bedroom house, and I have a two-bedroom house without a apartment? It's all about flow. So I'll work on the accessory apartment bylaw. What I heard for the multifamily, again, is that cottage court concept is one that I, we've had developers from Florida come up, why don't you do cottage communities, it's a form of multifamily housing. We can start working on that a little bit. Remove it from LIA, amen. Carlson Lane is a classic example, it's a zone industrial, they were next to the sawmill for a while, they were, so we can look at that as maybe a test case. It's not on the sewer, but you may want to say, okay, here's, here's a situation where the, a multifamily zone makes sense, because that's what it is. You really don't want an industrial use moving in next to them, as you recall, and they went in as a matter of right. Right? So I'll, I'll work on that angle a little bit over the next few weeks. I did talk to Jim, that we want to have this on the agenda every meeting through, do we get it done?
Can we bring it to town meeting, till we have a warrant article? We're gonna, the idea was that we may not have it, but it'll be on the schedule, and we'll say, well, it's, it's gonna be next week or something, it's coming up, it'll be discussed.
Right, like, you, can we port next week to the selectmen? It's not gonna be on the agenda that you started this process. Here are some points we're working on, and we're gonna work towards, there's an article at least for, for January, at least get it on, and over the next four or five weeks.
Be here soon.
Be here before you know it.
So, um, do you think that there's a valid point there with, you know, being adjacent to the business zone, maybe we could...
We talked, yes. We talked about these transition zones, or these stepwise zones. Classic example is Stop &amp; Shop. You have a business two-zone with a grocery store with the Cisco trucks in the back offloading, and right next door is Kathy Ann Lane's, Residence B. So you, you have more of a transition zone, if you have a multifamily, a business zone, and more of a multifamily zone, and then a single-family residence zone, you get this transition effect. So it's, it's a very point well-taken. It doesn't have to be the business zone, it can actually be adjacent to them.
Right.
Do, do the board members see multifamily as a separate zoning area, or do we just tweak some of the other zones to allow multifamily?
Personally, I see it as new, adjacent to business, where of course it's already built now, but it will increase the value and make an opportunity for somebody, if there's an area where some property is in, you know, disrepair, maybe rather than build a new house there, it'll develop into multifamily.
One of the things I heard, and I didn't hear it hit specifically, but I want to point out, right now we have a density of business property that's no more than eight units. So what if we thought about going to twelve? Or, you know, or some number? So I would like to have that be discussed for these border areas that we're talking about, that maybe we have just a little bit more density. And also, we, what Brian said, and when we discussed at the local comprehensive plan, we are talking about a flow-neutral growth, that means we're gonna find other areas we're gonna take development away from to do this, okay? Keep in mind. So we're basically, the, on our planning was to bring things from the core and offset it by taking it away from further out. And then, and that way we're living within the spirit of, you know, what we're trying to accomplish. And that, I didn't know if that was, I heard from Brian, but I don't know if it sunk in with everybody else, but that was definitely what we discussed in the local comprehensive plan.
The other thing too, from what I have read, that is necessary here on the Cape that we don't have, the truth of this, I don't know. We don't have efficiency apartments, and we don't have one-bedroom apartments to attract the young people, because these are by virtue of their size, less expensive too, than a two or a three-bedroom apartment. And there is, from, again, I said, from what I have read, from reported generally in Cape Cod Times, when they do their surveys, these are things that are necessary to keep young people here that are affordable.
I can tell you from my own practical experience, there's many, many second and third floors along Main Street that are just big empty boxes that have no one in them, or had no one in them for eighty years, that, but because they have sprinklers, you could put them in, they don't have a parking requirement, and if it was, it's actually allowed in the zoning, and they're starting, the market's beginning to bring it back, but it used to, but I think we could...
The apartments.
The apartments. I'm involved with the landlords putting two of them, but it, it does happen. So if we made it, pointed it out and made it easier, and other people start thinking about it, but that's where we want it. We want it on the main streets, we want it on the sewers, where we have municipal parking, where the buses are, I mean, that's, and it, it has to be not necessarily really inexpensive, just but where working people could live. You know, people have jobs that work every day, they could go out their door and work. I mean, that's a good thing. So...
I got a question about what you brought up, where we're, I understand how we're proposing to increase density by adding, potentially adding multifamily housing in these outlying business areas. And how would we then take it away to meet that flow-neutral? By making larger lot-size requirements in other areas? Would that be...
It might be that some areas are currently zone light industrial A, that would allow six units an acre.
We take those away?
You take that away.
Well, yeah.
And there's a solution. We have to find it.
Right.
There's probably ten ways to do it.
I, I think the town meeting expects that. I mean, everyone, it's very clear from, you know, all the discussions we had about sewer-ing of the community, about, you know, you may remember that we're gonna have, you know, Trump Towers, high-rises, the whole bit, and DEP doesn't want to give us a zero percent loan, and then increase that flow to the point where our sewer system is working.
We don't want to be creating new forty-million-dollar sewer projects for these areas.
So, yeah, there, there are areas, and it would be a pretty easy, no, okay, it would make sense, there are some areas that are inappropriately zoned for any number of reasons, over the many years, it's archaic zoning, it's, you know, lost its useful life, that you may have an area that you say, okay, we want to revitalize this area on East Main Street, we looked at it ten years or twelve years ago. There are areas that maybe business two-zoning doesn't make any sense, but residence four-zoning does. So you downzone a business two-zone area from six units an acre to your new multifamily zone, that might be four units an acre. Am I right? So there's ways to make the cut and fills.
That's what we're looking for too, is a lot of buy right.
Right.
To eliminate a lot of special permits.
Right now, it's a hall special permit.
Yeah.
So that's something I wanted to hear, you know, we're looking towards a new zone, adjacent to business zones, transition-type zones, where you might have a buy-right density that you don't have today that makes sense.
Functionally, Brian, when you say, no, it's a zero net for sewage, do you then, when we would present something to town meeting, have to have both in line with each other, or do you take away first before you add? How do you make that work?
Um, that's a good question. We did try it a few years ago, do something like that, and it was sort of cumbersome. So I guess, yeah, you would have to come in with the proposal, that does both at the same time.
Yeah, 'cause you'd hate to lose...
And here's, and here's an example, without spilling the beans. It might be that you have your new multifamily zone. It might be that you take an existing business zone and essentially downzone it. To make it very simple for the town meeting members, here's, here's an example, before you go take another piece of property that's residentially zoned and upzone it, and have to downzone somewhere else. So you may want to take a piece of archaic business two-zoning, that's been there for ninety years now practically, that has never developed into a business area, probably never developed into a business area, but you may already see single-family homes or some multifamily homes in zoned out. Your general residence district, you want to then upzone, you know, because you've got three units by right, a fourth unit might make sense if you've actually downzoned a little business. But my sense is you're gonna take an existing B2 or LIA zone and create your new R4 zone.
And you'll be able to look for guidance from other areas models that we could, we could start working with at this time.
Right, now that I've heard, you know, prima facie, here's what we're thinking about, you know, never reinvent the wheel.
Right.
Right, we'll go out and find something, and that works elsewhere, and see if we can apply it here before we create something new. But R4, I, you hear me say R4, Residence Four, four units an acre, pretty standard stuff.
Right.
Buy-right, in areas that, you know, you don't want to see a tire repair store, or tire general sales, or a burger diddle. Makes no sense to put a burger diddle here, and the property owner would be probably just as happy to have multifamily than compete with some other properties on Main Road that are gonna beat them out for a business two-zone.
One thing Bob mentioned briefly, I'm just gonna expand on, he talked about the conversion bylaw, it restricts houses that were in existence from nineteen eighty, possibly being more flexible than that date.
Yeah, the reason they have the nineteen eighty date, they were trying to capture those homes along, like Locust Street, that were just, and... along, like Locust Street, that were just, and Main Street, they were just too big to unis as a single-family home, they're too old. So they put that 1980 date in. It probably wouldn't pass, Dave, with the Attorney General's Office, because of that whole uniformity issue. So we'll think about that. You really don't want to be able to create something as a single-family dwelling and have it converted over to four units as a matter of right. So we have to get some thought to the conversion.
We'll let you work out those.
It might be that it's more location-based than it is age-based.
Right.
You've changed the criteria from a temporal one to a location one. Because that, just by its very nature, those, if you're on a, if you're on Locust Street, your property is probably going to be 100 years old, or a middle property. So, okay, I think I've got enough guidance here. We won't have anything written up for next week, but we will start emailing some stuff out to you folks probably fairly soon, and be ready for your discussion on the 29th.
And these items are also, as I recall, at least for discussion purposes, on the joint meeting agenda.
Is FYI on the joint meeting agenda? Just as the selectmen have some FYI information for you. Is FYI, we're working on these, we anticipate having something for the fall, I think, for the spring town meeting. Here are some concepts, some basic concepts, more than anything else at the joint meeting.
The joint meeting is, well, we'll get to that in a minute.
Very good.
Yep.
Okay, general correspondence, the first item is a notice that I've just passed around, and we've all signed, and everyone's passed it down to Brian, saying that we're all aware of the conflict of interest bylaw. Every year, we're required to acknowledge it.
You are good doobies.
And so we've all just done that.
Okay, got it.
And, that's Brian, there's a very lengthy letter, I'm going to let you.
Is that from Attorney Freeman?
Yes.
Yeah, my recommendation to the board is simply refer that to counsel. It's regards a potential local initiative project. Attorney Freeman offers his legal opinion on matters of law. My instant recommendation to this board on any matter is to simply refer it to counsel, and we'll get back to you on that.
I'm not, I didn't understand what you were talking about.
It's a local hopes, it's a, it's a lip application for McGansett Crossing, also known as, or formerly known as Holly Park in North Falmouth. And the applicant has written a letter saying he believes they've provided everything necessary, and I think Brian says it needs some more work, and he's submitted a letter from his lawyer, and Brian said, should we refer it to our counsel for a response? Gladly, would you like to see it?
Yeah, sure. Well, you don't need to wait while I look at it.
No, no, I'm just saying, I think it probably has merit, but I don't disagree with Brian. We probably should get our legal counsel to...
I don't need a vote.
Address it. If you want to vote, go ahead.
I think, when you're presented with a, as a board, with a letter from an attorney, we would be ill-advised to comment on such letter, because there are, I would assume, legal implications. So I would hereby move that we forward that to counsel for his comment.
I would second that recommendation.
And just maybe read it for our own information.
In the office upstairs, not allowed.
Right. Until further notice.
Any further discussion before I call for a vote on that issue? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Close it. Okay, we'll refer it to counsel, and bring it back as soon as possible.
I'll, as soon as...
Whatever counsel deals with.
As soon as counsel deals with it.
Right. Future agenda items. This is usually, we missed something?
No, I just want to update you on some, but if there's more, if there's new ones...
If there is, go to the board members first on the future agenda items. Ralph, you have one?
Right, yes, I do. Brian, I wonder if we could get a new subdivision staff report for, from FWGLC, the Valley Mead people? I mean, so many things were changed.
Oh, yes.
That if we could get a new, a new subdivision staff report on that one from you?
Oh, yeah, we just received that plan yesterday. So we did, we just let them introduce it to you tonight.
Right, okay. And then, I wonder if we get a staff report, and I'm guessing that you didn't provide us one for the Wallen-Hop subdivision, because they're going to change it.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So when they, when you receive that, and I'd like to have, because I keep my notes on these things on your staff report, either in the front or back.
No problem.
I'm looking forward to site visits for both of those. We were invited for one, I'd like, I'm hoping that we'll be doing site visits for both of them shortly. The planning office is undergoing reorganization to some degree, and, well, you've lost somebody or whatever, there's been a shuffle there. I was wondering if we could get a, an internal memo about what's going on in the planning office? No, you don't want to submit that to us?
I don't have anything to tell you at this moment, but when I have some knowledge, I'll let you know.
Okay.
I don't have anything to report.
Okay.
I'm not saying no to telling you, I just have...
Yeah, okay, all right. Well, I think it'd be an internal memo, but I see that Corey's sitting here tonight, and he's, and Marlene is not. And then, I like to keep in mind, at some future date after the fall town meeting, remember that we had thought about bringing forward the Marine District issue again. The fact that when it was at town meeting the last time, it was a petition article, and we've discussed the fact that possibly it should be a planning board article to, to put forth the changes that we had endorsed in the Marine District about the waterfront being, having requirement to be on the water. You recall what that is? So I just, just want to keep that on the back burner for now, but then maybe bring it up right after fall town meeting.
I know, I myself personally would appreciate some comments. Counsel for the applicant quoted so many references to the bylaws, I was totally lost by the fourth, fifth one.
Those are current topics in front of the board, and believe me, the representations were made. We allowed the applicant to make those representations. The board members, all you need to say is, thank you.
Okay.
And we'll make sure you have...
I just need...
The guidance you need.
That's what I was looking for, guidance the next time.
Guidance you need, I don't get into a back and forth.
No, I...
Right, right. But, yeah, Marine Districts is something that we put on the list, and we'll go from there. And, yes, the current topics you have, we'll make sure you have...
Guidance will be given, yeah?
You will have our...
You didn't have time to do what I showed you.
Again, we're not, always let them get in the batter's box first, let them make their representations, we don't have a back and forth, but the board will have all of the guidance they need. I just want to update the board on some of the future agenda items that you've given me to work on. I have discussed, again, with Attorney Duffy, a little bit of a tutorial, what happens when something goes to court, and we're hopeful to get that to you probably right after town meeting. So we're sort of working on that, because a lot of, it's very common, lots of boards and committees, you know, it sort of goes away and goes back, and so the process of what happens once an appeal of your decision is taken is something we're going to try to get in front of you sooner than later. We will be at a trial for a couple of your cases here next week. I won't be here, I'll be up in Boston on your behalf. Sometimes, times, times, you just don't want to watch, it's pretty tedious stuff. So I just want to give you a little brief update on that.
Is Land Court up in Boston? It's not at the stump in Barnstable?
Once in a while, the Land Court will come to Barnstable County, or other counties, but the Land Court is in Boston, it's up on Congress Street.
Oh, great.
Right. Yeah, it makes it difficult for...
Happy not to be invited.
Usually, it's a subpoena, but board members aren't subpoenaed, and you're never called as witnesses typically. So, but we can discuss, that's why it's important to, I think, educate the board members of what happens when an appeal is taken, that, you know, you're the, you're the jury on this case for this special permit, and we usually don't call it, and it usually never subpoenaed.
When Frank presents this to us, are we going to have, say, the ZVA here, too, something?
That's the idea.
Okay, good.
That's the idea, and we'll have a moot court.
Okay.
Someone here will be the town planner.
Who's going to have?
All right, all right. Who wants to play, who wants to play the town planner? Anybody?
Not I.
They call, they're here right now.
I was wondering, would it be appropriate to have perhaps a half-hour executive session before one of our meetings, on what the stats of some of these lawsuits are, that we always read about in the paper, what's going on, because we never hear anything? I know you say, don't worry about it, but there's a lot of activity going on, and we never informed of what that is, and maybe we don't have to be.
Right.
But it would be nice to know what's going on, since we're being individually sued in several cases.
An executive session is to discuss litigation strategy. So the counsel needs to come back to discuss strategy with you. You may recall that Attorney Harris came in on these CBS cases. That's the only legitimate reason for the executive session. It's not supposed to be a briefing of what's going on. That's why it doesn't happen. These are the types of points, I think, that's why it's important for Attorney Duffy to come in and educate you on what happens. If you want an update on a few ways, we're going to be, we're going to be up in Land Court next week at trial, but we try to not keep you in the dark about these things, only because, typically speaking, they're remanded back to you, and we don't want you to form impressions or opinions or come to conclusions, only as a board and at the appropriate time. That's why usually we don't involve you. It's a very good reason, but we're sort of straying off the agenda.
I saw Mr. Duffy the other day at town hall, and I specifically asked him, what he's doing to protect me from my whimsical actions during the decision process.
We're going to publicly humiliate you.
Capricious, capricious. So go away.
They have these things over by the historic district building, they can lock you in, put you over there for a while.
We're going to bring back the public dunking stool.
Yes. Other agenda items? Are we on that point?
Yeah, we're still, we're there, but you have it on?
Yeah.
I know we talked about it a number of times, about all these different projects that are going on, it'd be nice to get some brief updates as to what the commission projects are. I know that there's a delay of that. The transportation study, we're supposed to have another meeting, I thought, in September, and I don't know what happened to that.
Next week.
That's on the agenda for this joint, joint select meeting, that's the primary...
It is the agenda.
It is the agenda.
How do I know that?
We talked about it last week.
I thought we talked about it in the past, but if we haven't, a mistake, and you're sorry.
Well, I don't know, it's your meeting, right?
Yeah, I thought we had discussed it.
Well, we talked about it, but I don't know what's on the agenda. We suggested it be on there, but I...
Well, last week...
I thought it was going to that.
Last time we met, we talked about other items, and Mr. Curry said, I'm sorry, but it's going to be all transportation. So your other items are falling away.
Is there going to be a report that we can review before the meeting?
He's about to go to brief.
Why don't we go on to next meeting?
Okay.
And we can discuss this.
Yes.
Yes.
Next meeting, Tuesday, September 22nd, joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen.
And what you'll have is an up, you'll have a briefing by McMahon Associates on the corridor study. You had a briefing a few months ago. They will now advance the design concepts. I emailed them today, I want a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, or something for you to have over the weekend, from McMahon Associates, so you have, just walking in cold.
Prior to the meeting, we're going to get that.
Yes, yes, hopefully prior, with the agenda package, Thursday or Friday. They will go through all their design concepts, it's going to be a very long presentation, it's probably going to be at least an hour presentation, and they're going to go through all the intersection design concepts, from Mary Vista, I've extension, to in front of the administration building, to Dillingham at Spring Bar's Road, to Heights, you know, to the Heights Road. They're going to have a lot of information for you. So I want this PowerPoint, or at least the handouts they're going to have for you prior to the meeting. No decisions at this meeting, we're going to at least brief the board. Here are the design concepts, for instance, around about in front of the school's administration building, that's one of the design concepts they're going to talk about, so it's going to be a very lengthy briefing. Also at that meeting, you're going to have the transportation element, that's on the...
Local comprehensive plan?
Local comprehensive plan is on the warrant for the town meeting in November. You will have to be able to discuss that with the Board of Selectmen together at that meeting, too. We intend to update them on where we're heading with this multifamily zone and accessory apartments that we wanted on our agendas, we briefly discussed it this week. FYI, not so much of a discussion item, but FYI for the Board of Selectmen. For your edification, FYI, that Chairman Jones is going to allow, is going to let you know that they are looking at reorganizing the departments that have community development functions, that selectmen and town managers are going to be doing that over the next few months. And I'll let them brief you as to exactly what they're going to be doing. I'm more comfortable doing that. They want to talk to you directly, or at least, I'm sorry, they want to inform you directly what's going on with some of these departments and the reorganization that's going to happen. They also want to discuss a date certain, probably in December, when your next meeting will be, to avoid some of the, you know, lack of traction that happens sometimes, and what those agenda items are going to be. So those are the topics you're going to see here at your next meeting with the Board of Selectmen. The vast majority of it is going to be transportation-related, big briefings, and then some FYI, what we're up to, what they're up to, and then set it down. And at that next meeting, I think, Paul, yes, I think we're going to have the commission there to brief us on what's going on in Davis Street. So that, in a nutshell, is next Tuesday. Hopefully, this trial doesn't go two days, I'll get back as soon as I can. Schedule for trial, 21st and 22nd.
And that is the end of all the items, yes, Ralph?
I overlooked one thing, Brian. I believe there was a notification given to the planning board by the Cape Cod Commission about what was going, what is being proposed by the Steamship Authority. The newspaper said that the planning board had received a copy of that, that information, that whatever was brought, wasn't it, Paul, brought before the Cape Cod Commission, or who?
There...
It was something that was forwarded to the planning board and zoning board of appeals?
It's called an environmental notification form.
Yeah, that's right. E-N-I, or something.
An environmental notification form outlines essentially a scope of environmental permits that would be required at the federal and state level, and whether or not, and a full environmental impact report at the state level would be required.
Uh-huh.
It's not a planning board permit, it's not a...
No, I know it, but it was sent to us, it said it was sent to us, so why would they send it to us if they didn't think we wanted to know it?
No, it's sent, it's sent to the town, it goes to the, it goes to the planning board, it goes to the Historic Districts Commission. It comes to the town, and typically speaking, we get at them all the time, but they're not expecting a planning board response, Ralph. If you see what I'm saying? They come to the town and the staff responds to them. Right now, there are no local permits that implicate the planning board with regards to the Steamship Authority. We don't regulate the Steamship Authority anymore.
I understand that. But, so what is this, what is this thing, what is this piece of paper that you received say?
Well, tell you what, why don't we come on in, because it's really not on the agenda, and I can, I can show you.
Okay, well, I brought it up as a future agenda item, because I thought maybe we should be, maybe it should be on our future agenda item, if it was pertinent to us, because otherwise, why would they send it to us?
Let me explain it when you come in. It's not on your agenda tonight, it's, it's one of those broadcast things.
Okay.
It goes to like dozens of agencies, the notice, that may or may not be germane. It goes to Historic Commission, it goes to all over the place. If it's germane to the planning board, you would be, you know, brought in the loop, but if it's, you're not, then it's surplusage. Why would I bring you in if you have no jurisdiction? You see what I'm saying?
Okay.
Or the zoning board, or any board. And we get them all the time. You get Chapter 191 notices once a week, but, you know, the planning board doesn't usually get into Chapter 91 notices, because you don't have any local jurisdiction, it's the ComCom and the Selectmen.
Okay, thanks.
That brings us to the end of our agenda. I want to thank everybody who's been reading and accept the motion.
Moves to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.